All right, everybody set? I'd like to start this meeting. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start off with the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to need a motion to approve the amended agenda. We're going to move Jay on new business ahead of Eve. Can I get a motion? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thanks. Public comment? Do you have any comments for the board? So we're going to go right to Jay.
We'll go to the board's comment first.
Oh, yep, all right.
The board's comment first?
Yes. Any board members have any comments? Anything new out there? Anything going on? So we're going to move to Jay. Jay is new business.
So for Jay, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Chuddy for a brief introduction. And I'm sure Matt will contribute as well.
Sure. So tonight, Amy Kendrick from Weston Company will go through the audit. We went through this with Audit Committee already, went through questions. It's on the agenda except for tonight, but she'll go through a brief review of our year-end audit results.
All right, thank you, Mike. So hi, everyone, and thank you for accommodating me virtually tonight for the meeting. Just want to start off by saying that the audit went very well, as it has in the past. The audit this year was in a little different format. We had more of a hybrid audit where we did a lot of stuff in advance remotely and then had reduced time on site just due to the situation. So the fact that the Business Office went through this audit in a different manner and did so well really is a testament to the fact how well the operations are and the procedures are and the controls are operating at the district. I did go through the large financial statements, all 70 pages, with the Audit Committee a few weeks ago. So I'm just going to talk about it, just a couple highlights, and then open up for any questions or comments from the board. So you all have the final financial statement. This is due to State Ed and the State Controller's Office as well as the federal government. It'll be due October 15th. The good thing this year is there are no new accounting changes. So when you look through and you see the numbers, it's truly all the activity of the district during the year has no accounting changes. We were going to be adopting some new ones this year. They got postponed a year due to the pandemic. So the format is all the same, pages one and two is the first report or opinion from Weston Company. That's our opinion on the financial statements themselves. And that's a clean, unmodified opinion, the highest opinion we give as a profession and what the district has received in the past. Then after that, we have management's discussion and analysis. That's about a nine to 10-page snapshot of what happened during, at the district during the year. It allows management to put in some narrative and presents the numbers comparative to last year in different formats such as pie charts. But one thing to really remember is a good chunk of these financial statements are not how the district keeps its books and records on a daily basis. This MDA is on a long-term look. So it has some long-term liabilities in there for post-employment benefits that is actuarially valued. It is a true liability, but we're not able to fund it at the district level. The state doesn't allow us to. So it can kind of distort the results if you only look at those pages and don't kind of look further into the document. The financial statements themselves start on page 13. The first two, 13 and 14, are that long-term picture of the district. So this long-term picture has a net position of a deficit of about 13.6 million. But that's really a result of that post-employment benefit liability, which is about 66 million, that long-term liability. But the more important financial statements start on page 15. This is how the district keeps their books and records on a daily basis by each individual fund. So Pat will give me all each individual fund's trial balances. This is where we start our audit from. So the district has the general fund, which accounts for most of the audit, or most of the activity of the district. Then there's the special aid fund, which is the grants, your federal and state grants. You have the school lunch fund, which is for the school lunch and breakfast program, the public library, the debt service fund, special revenue fund, and the capital fund where you record all your capital projects. So these are the funds of the district. This is how the district operates on a daily basis. And if you look at the general fund, you have a total fund balance of about 13.5 million, which consists of your reserves and some unassigned fund balance. Then after the financial statements themselves, starting on page 20, start the footnotes to the financials. These just give some more description of the activities of the district. It talks about each individual fund and how they can be used. It talks about your individual reserves that you have and how those can be used. And then it gives some more support for some of the long-term numbers that are on the first set of financial statements. There's detail on your fixed assets and some longer liabilities are in there. Then after that, you have some supplemental information, some general fund budgetary comparison and some other schedules that are required to be in there either by the government's accounting standards board, State Ed, or State Controller's Office. And then starting on page 56 is our second of our four opinions in the financials. This second opinion is on the controls over financial reporting and compliance. So we're not an internal auditor. You guys are under 15, under signature, not required to have an internal audit. But we do look at your controls in regards to financial reporting. We do our own risk assessment. And there was no findings, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses to note here, clean opinion. And the third opinion is on page 58. So this one has been new to the district the last few years. So this one is on major programs and grants. So if the district hits a threshold of having to spend more than $750,000 of federal money, we do a compliance audit with grants. You guys are just slightly over that. So we did look at your special education grants, which is your 611, 619 programs, as well as your school lunch and breakfast program. So we looked at those. We had no findings, clean opinions with those programs this year as well. Then after that, we had to audit the extra classroom activity funds. These are required to be in the financials because the board has special oversight. And in here, it just lists out the clubs that you guys have for each individual club on page 67. And that's detailed out there. And then the very last part is a management letter. These are just items that we find, nothing major, nothing significant. And really, there's minimal items to note here just really because the district has done such a great job with its controls and its procedures. So there isn't any findings or anything major to note in the management letter either. And I know that was a kind of a brief overview. But I don't know if Matt or Mike or if anybody wanted me to talk about anything specifically or if any of the board had any questions on the document or the audit process.
I think in committee we had perhaps a one-sentence change, which maybe or maybe not was going to be added based on if conditions changed around state funding.
So. So there was, we did add a footnote this year, and it's the last footnote on page 46. And it's a subsequent event footnote. So Matt, we did leave that as it stood because nothing had changed. But what this footnote does say is that we're in the middle of a pandemic. The governor has, you know, at this point, we don't know if our state ed is going to be withheld, if we're going to be made whole. We don't know what's going to happen. So these financial statements themselves could look different next year. The financial picture of the district could look different, but we don't know yet if they will or how much. So that's what that footnote disclosure is really stating.
Sure. You know, in the committee, I don't think we had any other questions. The board?
The only thing that I noticed is, you know, it's, I know we really worked hard to get the clubs together, but the clubs seem to be an issue often.
So the clubs are, I'll be honest, at every school district, they're an easy one for the auditors to find something with because they have their own set of rules. So they have to pay sales tax, charge sales tax, they have to do profit and loss forms. But really, I mean, all we noted this year is you still had one inactive club, which in talking to Mike purposely remained inactive because they didn't know if they were going to be able to get it up and running again. They didn't want to just get rid of the money until, but I think now they're just determining that it's going to be disbanded and then the funds will be redistributed.
I was good with your answer that many schools have the same issue, so thanks.
You guys are actually in really good shape.
No, I knew that.
I actually have one follow-up there. Is it reasonable for management to just do an accept there on inactive clubs? You know, if we're not sure if they're going to fill or they're going to return? And has reasoning behind it?
So really, the reason we bring it up to the board and to management is that, you know, a lot of, and you guys are in this situation, but so a lot of the times you're paying your advisors. So we wouldn't want you to pay advisors for a club that has, that's not really doing anything. So that's really what it's for, is kind of just to bring your attention to, you know, is this club doing anything? Do we have a paid advisor? And then really, the money shouldn't just sit there for years and years and years if it's never going to be active again, so. And you do have a board policy, which then says how to distribute that money when you determine it's going to be disbanded.
Thanks, Amy. Mike?
Yeah, so there was a middle school sad club that we, there was talk about reviving last year, so we did keep it on one more year. Since that did not happen, we, per policy, we'll put that to the student council. So we just, we did close out that club that wasn't there. We kept it a few extra years since there was always discussions trying to, since, you know, I hate to see a club raise money and then they come back a few years later and there's no money left because of that. But we held on a few extra years and it was time to close it out. So we did do that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Amy or Mike?
I just wanted to thank on behalf of the district, Pat and Mike, for their business office operations, as you can see by the audit and some of the other things that we've been involved with this year. They do an excellent job and so our appreciation for their hard work.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, guys. Nice to see all that in order. It was a time when it may not have been so neatly placed, so good job. Good job, Bumbel. Any other questions or comments for anybody? Well, thank you, Amy.
Thank you guys very much.
I know you have to run to another district, so thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Thanks.
Oh, really? All right, we're going to, we're going to cover R25 right now while we're on the subject. Be it resolved at the Board of Education, accept the independent audit report and corrective action plan for the year ending June 30th, 2020, as submitted by Weston Company, EPA, TC, and direct, and the direction of superintendent to implement auditors' recommendations. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. All right, back to building departments. Sal?
So, all right, Mike? So it's my pleasure to welcome this evening our three building principals, Mr. Thorson, Mr. Burns, and Ms. Vino. And they're going to come up and, as we did last year, although this year is nothing but typical, they started off the year by giving you a little overview. This year is like no other year, and they're going to share with you some reflections as to how this year is going so far or not.
Good evening, everybody. So I thought we'd basically just start off with a little recap of where we were at the end of last year. As you guys know, it was maybe March 12th and 13th, whatever that day was when we said goodbye to our kids and knew we were taking a little bit of a break. Think we all envisioned that we would be back in a couple weeks, and that never came to fruition. So our focus last year with our students was, and our families really was just trying to do our best to stay in touch, stay in contact. And as much as we, I think our teachers worked very hard to try to keep all of our students academically engaged. I think they did the best that they could. Our real goal at that point in this new world was just staying in contact, communicating, making sure that nobody fell off the, you know, fell off the table and we weren't able to figure out what was going on because we knew it was very tough on families. We knew it was very tough on everyone socially, emotionally. And we didn't want any of our kids out there floating with us not knowing what their, what their status was. We had major connection issues, you know, so much time and effort went into trying to feed our families. And I thought our district did a phenomenal job with all of that. Saying that, we knew that we hadn't shifted the focus coming into this year. And I would say that the first half of the summer, really, a lot of that time was spent networking with other school districts. We talked once or twice a week. We met with the principals in our West Star region. And I would say for four or five weeks, every time we solved one issue, we created issues for someone else. And we went through that cycle and continue to go through that cycle and just grasping at straws, but how can we best serve the families in our community? How can we ramp up the rigor and try to get back to some, to reemphasizing academics while at the same time trying to fit everybody in school safely? You know, trying to get a feel for what our community was looking for. So throughout that process, we ended up, at some point in mid-August, like every other district, really at a loss. You know, you had school districts that got way out in front of this and they had reentry plans done in May that they redid two, three, and four times. You know, we knew we didn't want to be there. At the same token, we weren't, we weren't at all confident that we had the answers either. So we took the lead and we proposed to sell a reentry plan that kind of had, would baze us back to business as usual, at least as close to business as usual as possible. And we knew that our priorities were younger kids, trying to get our younger students back in the building as much as possible. We knew that our priorities were students who had difficulty learning, whether it be just a reluctance or diagnosed issues. We knew that, you know, those folks really were our priority. And how do you make that work? How do you fit all those pieces in the puzzle together? So we came up with our, with our start plan, which was a delayed opening. Kristin, you started with, you want to jump in? We can't, because you were the first one to start with students in your building. Mike and I started remotely, but Kristin was the one who.
So we, in the elementary school, when we were remote, I brought a plan to sell to have some of our students have the opportunity to be in the building for childcare reasons. I knew that it's going to be tougher for families to not be in school, but to be home. So we had about, well, we started at 30, but we added a lot after that. Students that came during the remote time and they were able to sit in the cafeteria. They brought a lunch. It was just a safe place for them to be, to access the Wi-Fi and learn from their teachers who were down the hall teaching from their classrooms. We felt strongly as an elementary faculty that we wanted the kindergartners in right from the go. And that's mostly because that's their first experience in school. We didn't want their first experience in school. And the parents didn't know how to use the technology that we were going to provide for them and trying to explain how to get on the Google Classroom. And having, you know, all of those technology challenges on top of the fact that the teachers wanted them in school and it just socially was important for them to be here and understand what kindergarten looks like. That kindergarten started immediately. They did not have any remote time, with the exception of one day where we went, one group was in for screening. They had two days of remote while we screened some kindergartners. And then slowly, we brought back each grade level. So I know, we went backwards. So we did fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, second grade, first grade. One day, that transition week, it was fantastic. We learned a lot that week. We learned a lot about how important that health screen is in the morning to be filled out. We learned a lot about moving around the building, about teaching kids, about social distancing. All the things that we were worried about, we didn't have to worry about. Nobody took off their masks. Nobody was, you know, rebellious, so to speak. Also, all the things that we had planned in our head, like how are we going to handle these things, didn't happen. It was things that we didn't plan for. I just want to go back to one thing. When we, when the teachers were remote in the elementary school, the nice thing for us too was all the teachers got to do professional development at some point being in the building. And I think one of the reasons that the remote plan in the beginning of our school year worked so well was that in all three buildings, teachers were in their classrooms and they were able to access materials and access their smartboards and access all these technology things that we have here that they didn't have at home when everybody was home. I mean, who has a smartboard at home? And, you know, they weren't able, they were able to come in in dribs and drabs to get math books and et cetera. So that, I think, also was a strength, was that our teachers were actually physically here and they wanted to be here. They wanted to be here in the spring and they couldn't. So our transition was, you know, it seemed to go pretty smoothly. Want to talk about your transition?
Yeah. And as Kristin said, no, I think since we left in March, every day has brought its own sense of challenges. I feel like we're really going day by day. That being said, you know, we left not knowing if we were going to be back in a week, two weeks, a month. And teachers and the kids did a phenomenal job picking up, doing the best they could given the circumstances we had. We know that our remote plan in the spring had holes in it. We know it wasn't ideal. And we worked as a team, the three of us in all three buildings, to make improvements on our remote plan in case we ended up going out full-time again. So we spent a lot of time working over the summer in the elementary school library every day. And there were some days we'd create plans and two days later, those plans would be in the garbage and we'd be starting all over again. You know, we each have been in principal meetings, with principals across the area, and we have the same conversations, it seemed, weekly with, I don't know, answers, trying to figure this out and just getting more, more stressed as September was coming along. So we met with teachers. We had some town halls with parents. And with working with the teachers, we kind of finalized our remote plan, which I think was very successful. So, you know, while it took us a little bit to get there and there were struggles there, I feel that the start of our school year worked really well. And I think that if we do end up going full remote at any time, we have a solid plan in place. And like Kristin mentioned earlier, part of it, for us, John, we did a two-hour delay schedule and, you know, office hours in the morning. And it was really good for the, to help our students transition back into the schedule, even when we met the kids for the first time, which was probably the best day for me since we've been out before the kids came back. I think we can all say that. And I asked them with a show of hands, how many of yous is the first early you've woken up since we left? Since we left, the majority of them rose their hand. So I think having that transition in, and for me, I was able to meet with kids, which I don't always get due in my position. And Mike and I were able to do Google meets with each grade level, talk to kids, kind of answer some of their questions that they had. John and I had a lot of student town halls with kids too, just to kind of hopefully lessen the anxieties that they had. And it really helped us with a lot of our decisions because, of course, we want to hear what the kids, what the kids have to say and what the kids are going through, to help with our decisions. So since March, each day has brought its own challenges. And I think we're putting out fires every day. And I think that continued up to today. So, you know, this has been extremely stressful for us, for the teachers, for parents, trying to figure this out because the hybrid plan right now, it's difficult. It's hard to manage. And, you know, we're getting feedback from parents, feedback from students, talking to each other daily to try to make it better. You know, with our remote plan, I feel like we did. I think it's just going to take time and more resources and more PD for us to get there. But overall, I think, you know, Kristin was kind of the guinea pig with the kids coming in. So John and I were kind of, you know, waiting to see how it went with her. But I was really impressed with how our students handled coming back with the masks and so being socially distant. And like I said, that's been the best part of this so far, seeing them come back.
It's clearly been the biggest positive, is the fact that our kids have been fantastic. Safety procedures not perfect, but fantastic, understanding, respectful of one another. All the things that are, that actually our colleagues had told us that we're a couple weeks ahead of us, told us, you're not going to have the problems you think you're going to have. Kids are very quiet. Almost, it was almost a little, it was almost sad in a way because they just, they just didn't know what to expect. And they were very, they're just very quiet and not at all, you know, boisterous and not at all their usual outgoing selves. So that was a little bit tough to take. I think initially was, you know, just trying to, trying to, you can't see a smile. You kind of see cheese raised. But try, just trying to get kids to be happy about getting back to some type of normalcy. And for some, I think, you know, there was some of that. For some, there was a lot of anxiety. And you know, you look at the, oh, yeah, the news, open the news every day. People take such, such different stances on all of this that I can only imagine for kids how hard that must be. So that was a lot of our time we spent talking to kids about the fact that everybody has a right to have their opinions about all of this at home. And I, and I'm not begrudging any of your feelings or opinions on any of this, but we're in a public place and we need you to be respectful of one another. And some people are very, very concerned about this. Some, not so much, but if we're here all, we're here together. We need to be respectful and we need to take that into account. I think our kids have been fantastic with that. I could tell you, for me, now that we are, we're into the hybrid, it's very difficult and I'm not, I'm sorry for ourselves here, but it's very difficult because I think on a daily basis, it feels, it feels often that in order to support families and kids, we're asking for things that are tougher on teachers. And in order to support our teachers, they're asking for things that are going to be tougher on families and kids. And that's a very difficult situation to be in. And it's truthful.
John, can you explain that more?
Sure, sure. So remote, there's a, there's a part of me right now that says we can put together a much more comprehensive, thorough, remote education, education plan for our students. But that doesn't take into account the families that will be impacted by not being able to work in that situation. That doesn't take into account the fact that, you know, if this happened when I was a high school student, that I would have found lots of ways not to get my work done. And then, of course, that's, we're dealing with that. You know, there's so many, all of the, all of the things that we have a hard time motivating a student or helping a reluctant learner or helping somebody who's having, having, you know, all of these variables, all of these situations that we had a lot of control over when everybody was together in the building. We don't have that same control now. We don't have the same, we don't have the ability, you know, when the mother and the father say, listen, I'm out of the house at 6:30. It's a very difficult situation to work with that kid now, right? Because the kid says, yeah, I'm taking care of my business. Mom leaves, the kid's back to bed. And this is the, this is the battle that, you know, that we fight. And so I can tell you, a very, a very, this Friday is progress reports.
It's what?
Progress reports. Okay, so kids are going to get their first grade that they've had in a long time. Our failure rates are very high right now. So it's a, it's a progress report. So the hope is, and what I talk to my teachers about, and I'm sending out a proactive communication to families, what I'm going to talk about is, it's commentary that is going to be, in this case, I think the number does mean. what I'm gonna talk about is, it's the commentary that is gonna be, in this case, I think the number does mean something. It sends a message. It's not in stone, it's just a progress report, it's just a five week mark. But I'm going to send a letter out that just says, guys, I talked to you, we talked about how we're shifting our focus and reprioritizing education. And I talked to you about how you're not going to get a, you know, you're not gonna get a complete. You're gonna be, to get a grade. And I think some of them are gonna learn this Friday that, oh, they meant it. My hope is, is that that has the, that has the impact that could step up the challenge. My concern is that, you know, you get a, a, a student who's a reluctant learner or you get a, a student who struggles and that they just defeats them. That's a big concern. But at the same token, we have to get back to business as usual. So these are all of the things that, you know, that we're taught, that we, that we think about and that we're talking about on a daily basis. We're all extremely concerned about everybody's social emotional wellbeing. I, I went through school last week, a couple of days after school at 2:30, 35. On both the days that I did that, it was at least five teachers with their lights off in their room with their headphones on. That's the way we feel every day, that's the way kids feel every day, that's the way parents feel every day. I worry about us sustaining this. We need to be honest with you. We have real concerns about that. And like I said, we, we address one issue. If, if three or four families come to us with an issue and we address that issue, most, you know, nine times out of 10, that creates another loophole, that creates another problem or another circumstance that, you know, that we didn't necessarily see or just a trickle down effect. So.
No, that's okay. That's all right. Yeah, and my, my concerns are different because the students are in full time. My concerns are around, I think, I'll give you an example. I had three students go home sick today of three faculty members. So the faculty members left, only three. And Mr. Portrand had to cover three recesses, I covered two recesses. I almost had Kim Layton cover a recess because it's not a situation in the past where if this happened, I can just take 60 kids and throw them in the gym and, and say, all right, let's do something. I can't, they can't always use the equipment and I can't put 60 kids together in a room. At one point today, I said to Brett, we may have to line every single kid up on a dot in the hallway and you and I just stand in the hallway and watch down. So for me, my concerns are the very small amount of, of teachers being sick or teachers' children being sick that is gonna put my faculty and building into crisis mode because I can't spread them out. It's wonderful having the kids in full time, it really is. I, you know, and I, I don't have the same concerns with the hybrid that, obviously, that Mike and John have because my, my students are here, they're learning. My concerns are those, you know, I can't leave a group of kindergarteners in a classroom to, to, to eat their lunch because I got three other classrooms that are uncovered. I mean, we just never do that, we would have to sit them in the hallway.
If a student goes home with a runny nose.
Yes.
They have to get a test. And if they refuse to, then they have to stay out for 14 days for a runny nose, for a sore throat, basically for the common cold symptoms.
And, and.
This is going to get very, 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 very interesting.
And it's, and it's, you know, we're, we're coming up to this time now where we kind of said to parents, please let us know if you're going to be bringing your child back to school or not. And so in theory, I will have enough space if I use the gym, which we currently are using for PE, and every, the cafeteria, every available space that I can use, I'll be able to bring back all those students. But that's not taking into consideration what transportation will look like. That's not taking into consideration coverage because now I have my coverage down. But if I could spread the students out more, that's just more coverage concerns. And that's not even touching the surface of what teaching looks like and what curriculum looks like this year. And that's not even, you know, my, the staff in the elementary school are very concerned about just every day making sure they're there and making sure students are learning. And John's right, I see, I'm fortunate enough to have one remote teacher on each grade level. So we took one teacher right out of the classroom and we made them the remote teacher. But that made them the remote teacher.
Remote, okay.
And so I'm fortunate in that sense, but I see the same thing John is seeing. I see teachers that are just completely spent at the end of the day. It's like they've worked four jobs because they're running between two classrooms. So we can socially distance. So you may be teaching in this classroom and then you're gonna run over to this, this classroom, why the TA runs over to this classroom. Then if somebody has a question in this classroom, they gotta run back. It's just.
Yeah, so at the high school, we've, at the middle school, we've got half our kids run, that come in one day, half come in the other day. And then we also have cohort, cohort kids are done fully remote. Same teacher is teaching all of those for every class. It's very difficult, very difficult.
And don't get us wrong, having students in the building is the very best thing without a doubt. And if we could figure out a way, because we've been talking about this, to bring everybody back, it would be a no brainer. We would do it in a heartbeat. It is the one thing that we want more than anything. It just physically, our capacity is not there to do it as a, you know, physical space capacity.
I just wanted to chime in and, you know, echo some of the frustration because we talk as an administrative team on a regular basis. And, you know, we, we proved in those two weeks that we made a quantum leap in our capacity from the spring to the fall to be able to deliver quality instruction remotely. And, and then to go back and have to have our teachers navigate the hybrid, it's extraordinarily more difficult. And, you know, if you look around us, we're very fortunate, I probably jinx ourselves. You know, what Kristen and others have said, we still haven't had our first positive case. Another Questar School District today had one positive case and it took out 50 some odd students and I think a half a dozen teachers. It's not gonna be long when that happens that we can't operate a building. And one of the things that Kristen was alluding to is substitutes don't want to come in. People don't want to work in this environment. So in a traditional year.
Huge issue.
Yeah, we're in a traditional year where, you know, a teacher may be ill and we would just go to the sub list. They're, they're not there. They, they understandably don't want to come in to this environment, although we, we created a safe environment, understandably, they don't, they don't want to work in it. So it's, we're just, the challenges, as Mike said, are, are daily. I don't have any other solution than to, you know, tell us all that we need to put one foot in front of the other each day and try to, you know, push our way through. There are no good answers to some of these. And when we discussed what to share with you tonight, I said, don't sugarcoat it. This is a challenge that's gonna take every bit of our fortitude to overcome. And, and I don't know what it's gonna look like when we come out the other side. It's not gonna be pretty. I think whatever it looks like, it's gonna be having to reassess where our students are and figure out a plan that gets us back on track. And it could be, it could be more than a year or so to have that actually occur. I worry about this, this class, wherever you are in, in this point in time, whether you're a senior or you're a fifth grader. And, and we have students who are, there's probably a small, small percentage of students who are still thriving because they're just, you know, this particular environment suits them. But it's, it's, it's the vast minority for sure. And I worry, John mentioned the word sustainability, I worry every day that, you know, this team has worked almost nonstop and, you know, since March, including with most weekends, where if we're not on the phone or a text or an email, Mike's streaming about the next remote plan, you know, waking up in the middle of the night. And, and that's kind of what we experience. It's, it's not healthy and we're just, I'm not trying to paint a picture of bleak, but we, we, we're just, there's a lot of challenges. And the one thing that's interesting, and I don't think this is consoling, but it's, it's not like our district is going just through it and people are looking at us or we're looking out and saying, oh, for us. It, it is unilateral. You know, I'm part of that Questar group, as you know, and that's 23 some odd school districts. And everybody's just surviving. Some have a little easier because they have a lot of extra capacity physically, but most of them are experiencing the same challenges that we are.
I'm talking to some principals who are getting less than 30% of their remote kids to attend. A lot of experiences of that. There's some places that are really, really, really stressful.
I, I will say on a personal note, if the administrative team was not as cohesive and tight, cared about each other so much, this would be unreal, you know. So I think we have, we're very lucky in that sense. I called Mike today in complete panic because one of my secretaries had to leave and I was petrified in tears saying, I can't, if Kim goes, I gotta shut the building down. There's no way I can run the building without Kim. And it wasn't Kim, but it just, and Mike said, you gotta stop and you gotta like, let's not, like, let's just take one day at a time. Like, Kim is still healthy and she's fine and everybody in her family is fine. But it's that, like, you know, your, your mind starts to get into situations where, like, I don't know if I could function without two secretaries in the office. Like, there's, there's no way that Brett and I could run a building without all the things that they do. So it's kind of like these little, you know, things that we wouldn't ever really think about on a normal basis. Because in a normal year, Debbie would pitch in, but I know that Debbie's got, is working twice as hard as, you know, anybody. Or, you know, or we have people on the sub list who would come and solve or it, it just is not, it's just difficult.
The other reason why it's real important that you hear all of this is that we greatly appreciate your support out in the community. I'm not so sure all parents understand what we're going through. I communicated with a parent, so you have to understand, we started out remote for two weeks and then we had the transition week. And then on October 5th, our students started back in what is now their schedule. So that's a Monday, if you follow, you follow this. If you're on a hybrid schedule and you're the, on the A side of that, you were gonna come in on Monday that week, Wednesday and Friday, right? And if you're a B student, you would've been Tuesday, Thursday. By Wednesday morning, Mike and I were sharing an email from a parent who said, this isn't working. This is, this is a colossal failure. And I was like, oh my goodness, the child has not even been through the second day of a hybrid schedule and a parent was feeling like that. And I'm not trying to discount the way the parent was feeling or minimizing how they were feeling. But that's kind of the, you know, very common sentiment that everybody wants what we had in the past, they want it to be back normal and this is far from normal. And I, I, I don't know if we can continue to do better than what we're doing. There's probably some room for improvement, but we also have to kind of level set our expectations as to what's possible. And I think that we have to, to do that, we have to have a community conversation. Full transparency, you know, we've had conversations today and other days that said, you know, do we just pull the trigger unlike other districts? Do we just say we need to go full remote? That is truly what's probably in the best interest of our students academically, as John alluded to. However, that is a nightmare for most of our community members. So how do you, you know, how do you mitigate our responsibility to our kids from an academic perspective? And, and, you know, I listened to parents and some which are sitting here today saying, our kids want to be back. They, they want to socialize. They, that's really what motivates them to come to school. We don't, we don't want to take that away from them either. So, you know, we've kind of gone full circle, but it's.
There's one other thing that I should bring up. We've got the second quarter coming up and so we're going to, we're about to send out the families, basically, what's your plan or what's your pleasure for the second quarter? And by and large, most people have indicated that they want to come back. I've had, I've had people in my office bawling crying because it's not working for their kid. I'm sorry, I gave you meaning for you because you know, special education students, so you're gonna have to hold in, hang in there for the first 10 weeks. We're in the process right now of trying to look at the worst case scenario, you know, and then all different factors of that. But there are schools out there that there are phys ed teachers and there are teachers are teaching English or they're just sitting in front of the class monitoring and that's something we didn't want to do here. We wanted to, we wanted to preserve the integrity of everything that we do. I'm just gonna let you know that second quarter, that may not be the case in high school. It's all gonna depend on what the numbers look like and then trying to put together a plan that will work. And of course, that will have trickle down effects. For me, as a kid, you know, athletics was hugely important. We have athletes here, we've got kids that, that they live and breathe for art and music. And that is a huge part of why they enjoy coming to school. And it is, you know, just as important, if not more important to some kids than some of their core courses because it's what keeps them going. And to, to think that we may have to make that a remote experience or dim that in any way is heartbreaking. But at the same token, we have limitations, we have, we have spacing issues, we've got, you know, supervision, supervision issues. And it's gonna be very, very interesting to see what happens when those, when those requests come back.
And that, that will be true in the elementary school. We have a large, right now, we were able to not have our, not have any of our encore teachers be like a co-teacher in a, in a grade level. They are all teaching what they were, Chelsea is a librarian, she's on a cart, she goes to classrooms. You know, Christina's got to the art room, they're all doing what they're trained to do. But if a large amount of students come back and I need to separate kids now in three rooms instead of two, I'm gonna need bodies to supervise those. And unfortunately, that will impact some of the encore programs in the elementary school as well and use of the gym.
And Kristen briefly mentioned it, transportation too. We, you know, we, we're just stabilizing the routes from the beginning of the school year and figuring out what our ridership looks like. So that, as you know, I mentioned this in the Friday report, so we can honor some alternative bus requests. But, you know, we just don't know what the, the capacity is gonna look like if a, a large amount of students want to return. We tried to be as flexible as possible and if you, you know, that's why they're confronted with this issue sooner than later. And that is, unlike some districts, I believe, some of the other districts in Questar region said that the elementary school would not change for a trimester, but the high school would not change for a semester. So people had to commit till December or January. We wanted to be a little more flexible and we said the first quarter, which in retrospect is now, you know, happened so quickly that we've kind of perhaps accelerated our issues by having to, I don't know if the letter went out. A letter's going out tomorrow in terms of letting our parents know that we're almost at that point where they need to make a decision as to whether they want to come back or they want to stay remote. And, and I think that's gonna be directly impacted by what happens, you know, in the infection rate regionally. I think as, if, if things exacerbate, you're gonna see parents want to stay where they are or maybe perhaps even switch over to remote. But if things continue in schools to be relatively calm, then you're gonna want to see parents naturally migrate back in because that's what students want. Somebody, oh, Mike, you were gonna say.
Well, I was gonna add the transportation piece, but because really, there are so many barriers. You know, we, you know, we said we were going day by day. Still, you're looking 50 feet in front of you because you're like, all right, it's on the horizon, it's coming. So you, you sit and we plan and we write all over our whiteboards and scrap paper all over the desk with that. Plan A, B, C, and D. Like John said, you know, we really appreciate the support from everyone in here because while some other districts didn't do what we did, we were given the opportunity to start a little bit later and, you know, create that two hour delay schedule and move on and try to maximize the space in our building so we could have, you know, use it. They're, I mean, they're, middle schooler in the auditorium, they're spread out, gym, they're all over the place.
And they're willing to do anything to try to make it work.
Yeah. And we've, we've had, and there's so many plans that we came up with that we had to scrap. We had lunch in the cafeteria, it didn't work. We had to go to classrooms. The picnic tables was, was the biggest highlight, I think, of all because the kids were so excited because then we had space to go outside and eat. And you see winter coming, you know, it's just all of that, it's on the horizon and we're, we're working, we're, we're working hard, our teachers are working hard, kids are working hard. You know, I think we're doing our best and, you know, you, we're very driven to, we know we, we have to make improvements.
It's hard not being able to fix problems.
That's it. It's so hard. And it's very hard to say, I don't know. I feel like I say that every day. I don't know. I wake them in the morning, my daughter asks me a question, I don't know.
I start my faculty meetings by saying, thank you for coming together, guys. I'm, I'm happy to be here to not answer any questions. I get a little chuckle anyway and then they ask them and I go. ask them and I go.
You must be after this break.
Kristen, have we used the buckets yet outside?
The what?
The buckets, the Home Depot buckets?
I believe, yes, I believe so. I believe the Home Bucket Depot has been out. I do wanna say one thing, um, on the very positive side. Um, I stand and get all of the kids, so Brett gets all of the bus kids out, and I get all of the driving kids out. And I go each car and parent goes down the window and I say, you know, good morning, who do we have here? And I have to say, with the exception of maybe one parent in the last week, it's been overwhelmingly positive for parents thanking me, thanking the staff, excited to drop their kids off. I know that the community desperately wants their children to be back to normal and be back to school. And so I know that I'm the lucky one that I have everyone in school full time. I know that. So I, you know, it's, it's nice to, it's nice to know that there is a lot of positive community support behind being able to bring the elementary school back, you know, full time. Yes.
Even when they have questions or they're frustrated or they're upset, they're willing to listen. And, you know, normally the response is, I had no idea. You had to take all those things into consideration. And rightly so, I wouldn't. But they've been, they've been very, very supportive.
So we'll open it up for any other questions? Any board members that have any questions or comments? Matt?
I've heard some great wins from all of you. So I'm, I'm happy to hear upbeat responses, summations. But I'm hearing some, some anxiety. And it's not necessarily the things I expect. You know, obviously, if you have community spread in a school, there's not a lot of choice we can do about that, right? Shut down the building and the whole thing. But the, the other types of resourcing issues, it's, it's an unfortunate side effect, right? And it's one, and, and it seems like, you know, we've got winter coming and we've got returning students, and we're not gonna get any more building space, and we're not gonna get any more staff. So we need to think about, are we comfortable as a school district with the, the level of leveraging we're doing here? Two and a half days in secondary and, and full time and primary close to the leverage one there?
I'd welcome it. It's fine. We had that discussion. We had, we had that discussion today. Um, we said, what are some of the other alternatives? And again, we, you know, what, what you were alluding to is, you know, we're not, we just, we don't know the certainty of the budget as well. And we, and I've been reluctant in terms of putting or suggesting or recommending that we put any more resources towards it just yet. But that's not to say that as we move forward, we may need another couple hours of a bus run, or we may need a, you know, some short-term personnel to get over the hump. We're trying to do the best we can in terms of allocating existing resources to be physically prudent right now. But that doesn't mean that, that request to get us over a difficult time might not be on the horizon.
And, and one hand, resourcing is something we can have a discussion about if that, that comes up. I was also thinking about, there may be that there's no more resources. And so when we deal with that, it seems like it could be unfortunate to have to shut down if there was an end plan. Presumably, you guys have been thinking a lot about that. And I guess I'm curious from a board perspective and from a parent's perspective, what is the, is there an easy middle ground there?
Technically, everyone is in full remote, but you're still maintaining facilities for students who don't have the ability to stay at home. And we, you know, we, we, we kind of pounded that one around a lot because there was some upside to that. But then there was also some downside. And that was primarily, you had students in a classroom with their teacher of record in another classroom. And you lost the whole benefit of the ability to have really any meaningful in-person instruction going on. There was supervision going on. But admittedly, it may be that I'm teaching a social studies class while students in my class are in a math class, you know? And so I, I would take away any ability for me as a, as a educator to be able to assist students with, with different, you know, core, core courses. And so it wasn't ideal, but some school districts across the country, you know, experimented with that. Because basically, in a moment's notice, if you switched from what that would be called as full remote to everyone just being somewhere else, it did not, or you still, there was no disruption in the continuity of, of instruction, so to speak. So, you know, we tossed that around for quite a bit. And today, as, as late as today, we said, maybe we need to figure out, you know, a different configuration. You know, is it one day a week? Is it two days a week? No matter how you slice it, I think what you're hearing is, there's going to be someone that's displaced by the decision. So if we make it a little easier for us, it may be a heavier burden for parents. And, and, you know, and I don't know if, maybe this is, I don't use the word naive. I'm not so sure you'd get clear consensus of our families because there's so many different permutations of situations that cultivating a consensus as to what might be the best thing to do amongst the group might be very difficult to navigate. But nothing is, nothing is outside the realm of possibility moving forward. I don't, I, I think everything is, is on the table.
That's exactly what we pull off, staple, our teachers, our kids when they bring things up, our families. I always say, listen, I'll, I'll write everything that you're saying down. Okay, any ideas, any suggestions that you have? Because we don't, truthfully, we don't know where we're headed. So that's exactly how we leave all those conversations.
Yeah. And, and some things are just, you know, you, as Mike said, we brainstormed many different permutations. And, and there are some things that sneak up on you as well. We never even thought of that. Like, you know, we might be able to come up with a great configuration. But at the end of the day, you know, our student information system started out in a certain configuration. And if we totally blow that up and come up with something new, we create a whole new set of issues in terms of transcripts and grading and, and things that aren't probably insurmountable, but gonna be equally as challenging. I was trying to think of another scenario that I was thinking. Every time we take it, oh, and, and there've been some wins, you know, there's been some short-term wins. I think the way we figured out CTE and transportation, by thinking about it day after day after day, something emerged that we leveraged some existing capacity of drivers based on the, on the contract where they already worked two hours a day, but they weren't necessarily driving for two hours. And so that one emerged. And so there are times where some things do work out, like two pieces of a puzzle that come together. But more, boy, sometimes it feels like you're, you're doing, you're taking two boxes of puzzles and, and mixing them together and nothing's fitting and nothing's working. And it seems like.
And there's scenarios that you just don't even think, you need to think about until, so for example, if a student has a brother's, well, I'll give you a different example. I guess that's not true anymore. And that's the other thing. The health department regulations change two to three day, every two to three days.
They're different by county.
It's something different.
They're different by county.
So let's say, for example, a student goes out with a, a runny nose and their parent either does wanna get a COVID test, which takes sometimes three to five days to come back, or decides not to give them a COVID test. So they're out for ten to fourteen days. If they're feeling better, then I can't, or if they're out because, for example, my son Ethan, who goes to Goresville, there was a positive case in his class. So he was out for fourteen days. He was in quarantine for fourteen days. Now, if that happens here, I'm not just gonna tell the students, all right, you're free for fourteen days, you know? But I'm not gonna overwhelm the remote teacher who was, already has twenty-three kids, ten now add twenty more kids from that grade level. So we had to make a really quick throw together plan of how you, classroom teacher, are gonna work with these kids who are in quarantine, for whatever reason they're in quarantine. So we currently have about six or seven kids who are out on precautionary quarantines, who the teacher, before she teaches her class, eight to eight-thirties, meeting with them for a half an hour, assigns them some work. Another teacher meets with them from ten to ten-thirty, checking, you need any help. Another teacher meets with them from twelve, twelve-thirty. Another teacher meets with them at the end of the day. So it's these things that, you know, because we can't just say to a kid, well, sorry, you're not gonna be educated while you're home. Of course, they have the right to be educated. It's not their fault they're on a precautionary quarantine. So it's like things that all of a sudden pop out that you have to hit on a dime.
There is an example of where, where Kristen had it easy in the beginning because she had a full remote teacher and then she had classroom teachers. But then all of a sudden, students in those in-person classes needed remote instruction and they had to pivot a little bit. And there's a perfect example of how the team came together and came up with astounding creative solution to meet those children's needs. Because incidentally, the parents of those children had an expectation, from my perspective, that that could be the case, right? So now, all of a sudden, my child, whether it's in my control or not, and what I mean by that is, I wouldn't, I chose, my doctor asked me to get a COVID test and my child went and got a COVID test, or I decided not to go get a COVID test. And by guideline, now that student is out for ten days from the time that they're symptomatic and the siblings are out for fourteen. And now I wanna know what you're doing for me to have the continuity of education. So, you know, we've got, and, and as John was alluding to, and I'm not sure I had ever articulated this, but that, you know, we've got Columbia, Red Slayer and Green County represented within the Questar region. In Columbia County, we're the most conservative of the three. If a student goes home with COVID-like symptoms, and we've had newer numbers of them going home.
Which is a runny nose.
The siblings, this, we call, the nurses call the siblings, the siblings go home as well.
You do that to that.
Yeah. And that's not the case in the other two counties. But that's based on local jurisdiction. Um, the Columbia County wanted to be as conservative as possible. Now they're already, they're already talking in terms of some forty-eight hour rule. If a student is tested and the results do not come back within forty-eight hours, they are going to be put into quarantine until a result is obtained.
We had a teacher who had to do that. He had a call that all the kids in that classroom say that there's a pending test. And it was all negative. But because the test didn't come back in forty-eight hours, he had to notify everyone pretty much. And got everybody up, you know?
And the health department's been great. If we, if we coordinate that, if our nurses call the public health nurse at Columbia County and we send someone to specific locations, the test results can come back in a day or two. However, if someone seeks, is, is referred by their primary care physician or seeks their own test, it could be at a location for which the results can come back in as, as many as seven to ten days. So, and you're now starting to see, I think in the Times Union today, in terms of some places are able to do rapid testing and others are not. And it's, there's, there's just so many daily, and, and they're all seem to be different, slightly different permutations of each other. Now, I was, over the weekend, I got a call from the assistant principal. A, a teacher was in contact with an individual who ultimately tested positive, but they, the, the, they know that he tested positive by a contact that occurred after the teacher was in contact with him. So, you know, it's, every, every time you turn around, there's, there's some permutation to this that we, that we have to, we have to decide. And.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just, I just wanna say that I wouldn't wanna walk in any of your shoes. I, I just wanna thank you for the countless hours and sleepless nights. I know all through you put in. I'm very concerned about the high school. I'm not concerned about, about, I'm very concerned about the high school. And I know you're working on it. It's not easy with, with that age and, and you've got the parents and, that aren't there. I'm just very concerned about the high school.
We, we certainly share that concern.
Anything we can do, anything we can do, I think you can count on all of us.
Appreciate it.
Just a quick question. So, a couple of, so, very bad, like, I was very proud to be a child alone. That sounds weird, but I know our teachers and it sucks. And it always sounds like I'm just saying, but we can, I feel like because I know our teachers, we can get through this, but it's gonna suck. And I'm so sorry that this has happened. Wow. Okay. And then also, what is the attendance rate in classes, like approximately for most of high schools?
I, I'll have to give you that information exactly. The problem is with attendance is that it's not an exact science. So, it's actually, it's, it's not, I've got chronic kids. It's not a chronic issue. That makes sense to you? I can give definitive numbers for you. But the problem is, is that, so you've got some, you know, you've got some kids who are all remote and maybe they're answering a questionnaire. Or maybe that's that they complete their test and that's, that's their attendance key. It's, it's not like you're going to make dealer, you know? It's different. So, but, but just, just to give you an, an idea, I've got, you know, a, a two. But again, we were trying, we were trying for our community, trying to get kids into school.
That's me.
But that's what we're talking about right now. The other thing we're trying to battle there is, like, we went with a two-hour delay schedule. We wanted a two-hour delay schedule to give teachers a two-hour block of time for professional development or create planning opportunities. But we also have to be sure that we're providing enough seat time for our students so that they're, they're, they're credits. We do get a lot of, we're standing there. So we have talked about it and continue to talk about, especially, you've been talking a lot about sustainability over the last two weeks. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a common, a common discussion I've been experiencing.
I will tell you, when you, the three of us met and made a list of things that we wanted to talk to Sal about, we kind of prioritized them. Number one thing that we're concerned about, teachers and then our helping turn out. That was the number one thing.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else have a question or comment?
I just wanna say, we, you know, we, we support you guys and your teachers. And I, I hate hearing, uh, stress is added. I'd rather hear stress changed. But, um, so, I mean, gotta spread the word to breathe and, you know, and, uh, if, you know, I, I, I don't know exactly what, you know, I know masks, wearing masks and social distancing creates a whole new issue. Hopefully, it's, it's not that, that stressful.
The masks, I would think, is probably the least of our, our kids have been passed. Social distancing is an issue only because how, how many kids do we take back?
I've wrote probably, I've answered more letters than I probably ever have this year. And a computer, when I start typing P, comes up with patience before I even finish. And families have been really well, really good. I, you know, and, you know, so you can pass that on. Nobody's expecting miracles. If that helps in stress at all, we're using the word patience when we have to answer. And like I said, they're responding well. Not usually have to follow up on too many. And I understand, I get back and it, everybody's been really good on our side, my side, our side.
That's similar to the conversation.
Yeah. So, you know, you just, there's a lot of questions out there. You guys have and we have, you know, so, but, no, I think the plan to open was really good. We supported it. And I think you guys executed it very well. So you got that. I mean, I, I think I've heard from other schools that were envious the way we started and, and all that. And I said, it was teachers and it was all you guys, you know? So keep up the good work and stay, keep us informed on if something pops up quick, we can react.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. I did rewrite down something, John. I gotta tell you, you were a little, sounded a little disappointed because everybody was down and quiet. So when things go back to.
So when things go back to normal, it's really loud and rambunctious. I just might be able to remind you of something.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll move right along. Superintendent's report. I think we got that covered.
Yeah, so just, I want to just add a little, not to anything, just one other topic. Just, I want to bring up some slides to show you real quick. Typically, I would give you an update as how the school year is going. So you just got the best update you could ever imagine. So we're not going to go there again. But I just wanted to show you, back in December, we had Jay Thorne here from KARP, and the board approved, bring up some slides here, the board approved us to investigate the property off of Shore Road. At first, we weren't sure it belonged to us, although Mr. Simmons believed it belonged to us. But we did push back, I met with the mayor, I met with John, and they did go ahead and do a title search. And indeed, it does belong to us. If you recall, I'll make this a little bit bigger. If you recall, this is what it looked like when I showed you this slide back in December. You gave us the approval to go ahead and work something out with them if indeed the property belonged to us. And as it turned out, it did. This, again, is the location. And I don't know if you've been by it lately, but this is what it looks like now. The only thing I need to do is Photoshop Mr. Chuddy fishing off that dock now, or John, maybe you'll join him. But that's a result of some volunteers that came in with the collaboration with the town. You can see the crushed stone that the town brought in with some of their excavation equipment. But the clearing, clearing back the trees and the brush was a collaborative effort from some volunteers. And again, this is what it looks like now. And we did do a ribbon cutting earlier this week, sorry, later last week. And the dock was made possible by some donations from, I believe, Berkshire Teconic and one of the banks, too, as well. That'll be appearing in the local newspaper. I asked John to send the photo along so I could show it to you. But this is a great example of a collaborative arrangement. And I thought you'd enjoy just seeing what the result is. And we got it in in the fall, and I guess a few people have actually dropped their kayaks in and have used it. So, wanted you to have an update. And that's all I have for you tonight, the updates and this, unless you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question, because I enjoy hearing. They put in, they said they're going to tie it on the winter, obviously. We know when that is?
Yeah, John said probably about the second week in November. This first section of dock just detaches, and the dock has rubber wheels. And the town has committed to going in with a tractor and pulling it out, and then they're going to store it over in the pump station or just to the, to the right or to the left of this as you're looking at the dock. So they've made arrangements to do that already.
That's me. Did you have a comment? All right, we're going to be pretty long. Work committee, Pat, finance.
The finance committee met on October 1st. And it's rather a short meeting because all we really did was go over the draft schedule that Mike had prepared of the various meetings we're going to have throughout the year and the presentations that we're going to be making to the board on the budget activities during another month or so. We're going to be meeting again at the end of the month, I think on the 29th, and probably finalize that schedule, and that should be going to you all, to the board, first meeting in November. Hold on, I'm thinking about that. It's on, do you hear it?
No, we can't.
It's on. It's not, it's just not, yeah, it's on, but it's streaming, it's not working. Really, nothing much more than that. We have a draft, we have a draft schedule. It's similar to last year, nothing has changed really, just the dates. And we'll wait to finalize it at the end of the month to get it to you all for approval, first meeting in November.
All right, any questions or comments for Pat, finance? Okay, thank you, Pat. Old business, I dumped this on Matt. I don't know that he's had any time to really look down through anything, or.
I did read them all, recurring themes. And I'll be right here, if anyone had a chance to review it, and they have any strong feelings on any of these items, I would say, I've got some certain personal bias, but none of them do I feel strong about. And I think if anyone's doing anything on these items, we could go over them. Or perhaps we could talk about the types of things we want out of the support. I know there's, of course, NISPA recommended items, and then the items that NISPA declined to recommend. But then there's the recurring regulation versus deregulation, competition versus non-competition. And these are recurring educational themes, so. Do you, does anyone have a chance to look at these, or have any?
Really, did anything, did any, anything stick out as odd or outside of Chad's beliefs? Because we're going to be putting, Matt's going to be voting on behalf of Chad. So that's why I wouldn't mind everybody glancing down through, how many, there's 25, right?
There's 25, but only two-thirds of them are NISPA endorsed. So we could run through them one at a time, or try to send the notes after the meeting? I don't mind either way.
I mean, if everybody wants to take time and put their thoughts together, we should contact Matt with any questions or concerns. Unless there's something that you think that immediately we should discuss right now, but.
In my mind, none of these were particularly contentious.
That's the way I felt.
The one question I had, actually, was about the testing mandate, which comes up all the time. And NISPA is recommending, I guess, adding that to their platform. But when I read it, I was a little confused because they didn't actually say what they wanted to recommend.
Which number was that?
It is towards the beginning. Yeah, first one. So that, the.
And they didn't give a recommendation on it?
Well, they gave a recommendation and a rationale, but, you know, this is sort of a contentious issue. And they said, they're asking the membership to support an overhaul of testing. But in my mind, the details really matter, and there's no details here.
What school sponsored it?
Indian River. So, I mean, they, I think one of the things they're trying to do is make SUNY the authority rather than maybe align with national standards, but it's, or outside testing providers. But they don't do a real great job of explaining in detail what they're proposing. And so it's difficult for me to say that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
And I know everyone's got their favorite testing opinion, so it's a polarizing issue.
Well, like I said, if everybody could just run down through it during the week, they're taking a little out of time.
When is that, Brad? When is it, Matt?
Yes. October 31st.
But we do have one more board.
But, I mean, we could get working on it if something really popped out at somebody before the meeting, but, you know, just.
You know, some of these are back from last year, some of these failed proposals are back.
Yeah, I noticed that.
So.
Yeah, the same district's bringing them back ahead again, which. All right, well, we'll try to respond, help you out, Matt, but we're in good hands. So we'll probably put it on the agenda just to kind of brief about or bring it up one more time so it's not a surprise when it does come up. The business. R24. Resolved that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Megan Chair and as Board of Education member. That's September 29th, 2020. Can I get a motion? Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Jumping up to R26. R26, be resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda, A through M, as written. Can I get a motion? Get a second. Any questions or comments on anything, do consensus. All in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, items for future agenda. Anybody have any questions or concerns other than what we just, a report from our building principals? All right. Public left. Unless there's any hands up, are we in this?
Did you accept the resignation, did you still go with us?
We accept, we accepted it. Can you not hear me?
Oh, I can hear you just not.
The one we skipped, because we did it earlier, is 25. But we didn't really skip it, we just did it out of order. So, do we have? No hands up, okay. All right, well, in motion to adjourn this meeting? Second, all in favor? Thank you.